Good. Come on, go. Forward. March. Left.
Thank you. I like that preload, so I'm gonna go ahead and read my information real quick, so you guys can come on up, okay? Good evening, everyone. The Board of Trustees of ALI, Independent School District is not the meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. Our mission at ALI 5SD is to work in collaboration with parents and the community to provide an exemplary education for all students in a safe environment. As the ALI Board Trustees, we are here to set goals about policies, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and communicate the district's vision and the success to the community. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibilities of the superintendent. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. School board meetings are open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience participation is limited to the page of presentation portion of the meeting. These proceedings are being taped and video recorded, and I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. Thank you for taking this time this evening to join us for your interest in ALI, Independent School District. At this time, please stand as Craig Icon, specialist, public relations specialist, will introduce the group leading the pledge of allegiance.
We have a blazing classroom video organization, do yourself.
Come on, go. Forward. March. Left. 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 Right. Right. Left. Left. Come on, go. Ho. Left, two. March. Come on, go. Freeze. Colors.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to be Texas Flyer. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one entity, this all. Now, please don't be in a mood of sadness. Thank you.
Come on, go. Ker-ri. Colors. Ready, go. Right, two. March. Left. 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 Right. Forward. March. Left. 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 Right. Right. Left. 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 Right.
How about a hand for our record.
Thank you so much. That is awesome vibe. It's wonderful to see them march all the way through and all the way out. So, thanks so very much. At this time, I'm gonna turn this portion of the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Board, this evening, as you know from your agenda, your recognition, we have a couple of things that we wanna, we wanna do. Before we get started, first, Kelvin, does Ramon come on? When he comes in, we'll take care of him after, I wanna make sure. Jessica, what time is it coming? Okay. We have, we have a gentleman who's been supporting our district. He was building for many years. He has a cash bill, and he is now officially announced his retirement. I wanted to come up here because he's been taking care of this building for twenty-two years. I wanted to just let him know that we're moving forward. So, we'll go, we'll get started. We'll get Ramon here in a few minutes. So, with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Kurt Ewing from Houston Community College. I know Nina Sante, Dr. John Hanson, two trustees from Houston Community College here. I have shared with the Board, the ACC, and we're working on strategic planning, and I know Kurt has been kind of with this, with this sports liaison and outside farm. So, with that, I'll turn over Nina to you in time, and she can introduce Kurt, and what his text. Nina, welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Trustees, and so, we're attending ALI. Thank you for having us. It's an honor for us to be here to give you an overview of our strategic planning process. And, as you know, we have accomplished a lot together. For the last ten years, we have numerous accomplishments ranging from one high school to nursing programs, engineering programs, vocational programs, and recently launched senior exceptional program. And so, the accomplishments, the list of accomplishments grows, but it's time for us to look into the future. And all of us need to see what our future needs are from the community standpoint, not just here in ALI, but from across the entire city. And before I hand it over to Dr. Kurt Ewing, who's our Vice Chancellor for Institutional Effectiveness and Planning, and he will walk you through the process that we have and how you can provide your own work. Because basically, we want to seek your input, your ideas, your suggestions, so that we can set the future direction and priorities for ACC. And we can do that together, and that's the best possible way to make this community a success, and our students are going to benefit the most from this process. So, with that, I would hand it over to Dr. Kurt Ewing, and I want to say thank you to Dr. Hanson. He's our trustee, Mike Halligan, ACC Board. He's been with you for years. So, thank you for being here with us. And as the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I request that, you know, whatever input you have, just feel free to share with us anytime, whether through our trustee here, myself, or even Dr. Kurt Ewing. So, with that, Dr. Kurt Ewing, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Trustee Sonny, members of the Board. Happy to be here today. I brought a package for everybody. I will leave them right here. Just some stuff for you to take home, shameless plugs and those kinds of things about the things we're doing at Houston Community College. Four years ago, we launched a strategic plan, and we're in the final year of that now. And so, for the last six months or more, we've been engaged in some strategic planning work under the title of embracing Houston's future, our commitment to students today and tomorrow. That expression emerged initially in the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. And part of what we discovered in that, in that time, was that embracing the needs of the city was clearly one of the highest priorities that we had as an institution. And we discovered that in some ways, we did that well, and in other ways, we didn't do that so well. And so, part of what we're trying to do is to reach out as far and as wide in the city and throughout the greater Houston area to make sure that we have some sense as to what the needs are across the greater Houston area as we develop our plans moving forward. Just some things about us. These are things that many of you already know. We're between the third or the fourth largest singularly accredited community college in the country, the sixth largest degree-granting college and university in the country. We serve about one hundred and eight to one hundred and ten thousand students a year at twenty-three locations across greater Houston. A sizable number of those students are in our dual credit programs, of which many of those students come from this school district. And there's more things there to talk about, our class size and other kinds of things, the innovative work that we're doing here at the West Houston Institute, with, in conjunction with, in showcases with the ALI, Early College High School that's there. So, we've been engaging. I've been doing a lot of this, actually. I've been traveling around with Trustee Sonny recently, and my, my images on Facebook have grown increasingly, so I'm getting all these feedback from friends across the country. So, we're engaging community conversations. We're trying to go as far and as wide as we can to get to as many, as many groups as we, as possible. And really, to start here, this is the vision statement that we amended in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, beginning of the last plan, that Houston Community College will be a leader in providing high-quality, innovative education, leading to student success and completion of workforce and academic programs. We will be responsive to community needs and drive economic development in the communities we serve. Our hope is that early in two thousand nineteen, we'll be in a position, after having listened to the needs of people from across the greater Houston area for eight or nine months, we'll be in a position to make some adjustments to that. And I'm hoping that we might get some feedback from you on that point as well. A big part of what we're doing is inspired by Texas sixty-by-thirty. Sixty-by-thirty is a mandate that is looking, as you well know, for sixty percent of the Texas population to have some form of post-secondary education credential by the year two thousand thirty. Those goals are onerous. The expectations for us to meet that goal are strong, and if you look at the expectation just for Houston Community College over the next twelve years, they're, they're, it's a, it's a heavy lift. And the reality is, is that the greater Houston area can't reach the Texas sixty-by-thirty goals. That's a good chance that most of Texas will not reach it either. This is really part of the economic lifeline for the, for the state of Texas and for the greater Houston area to kind of maintain economic prosperity by getting more people into some form of post-secondary credential. So, Texas sixty-by-thirty makes it clear to all of us that higher education, some form of post-secondary credential, is not just a private good, that it's public good. All of us have a better life when more of us have, uh, better education, more education. So, we start here. In the package that you receive, there is this card from our Chancellor, Dr. Maldonado. And on there is a, is a coin. On the front of it, it says, Innovation Planning and Strategy. On the backside, it's blank. In the envelopes that you have, there's a sharpie. And we're hoping that you'll sign these, as I did mine, that you'll sign it, take the pledge. On the side of the coin, it says, Houston Community College, our commitment to students today and tomorrow. As of today, we have close to three thousand of these coins that we've been out all across greater Houston, and with people making commitment with us to the students of tomorrow. We're, we're working from a vision for a strategy that focuses on learning. And learning in the sense that we're not envisioning a plan where we're gonna etch in stone goals five years out that may, we may or may not hit. Our enrollment goals were pretty clear to us a year and a half ago. Harvey has impacted that fairly significantly. So, we're looking for a plan that allows us to be more responsive and more adaptive to the needs of the city and to the realities that we're experiencing. So, this is part of the frameworks that we're developing, an infrastructure that allows us to have a better understanding of what's happening to our students, what's happening in the, in the, in the region, and how we can be more responsive. Part of what I'm going to be doing later today, tomorrow morning, is I'll be sending your superintendent a survey that we've designed specifically for the local school district boards. In that survey are a series of six or seven questions, like the one that's here. What are the five things that we should do to improve the student experience? Central to our work is making sure that students feel welcome, that they feel secure, that they feel like they have a clear path with our help to be able to make their progress. What we're going to do with this is we're gonna take this feedback, and then I'm gonna send it back to you in aggregate with all of the responses, and then hopefully ask you to, to help us prioritize what we're hearing. So, what are the, what are the five things that you hear that we need to be doing to, to improve the student experience? Connected to that are, what are the top priorities that you, as an educational leader in the, in the city individually, I'm not asking you collectively, but individually, what are the priorities that you have around education in this, in this, in the greater Houston area? What are those things that guide your interest in doing this work so that we have a better sense of, of the priorities across the, the area? So, that's the end of the presentation. I'm, I'm certainly open to, to questions or comments. If either of those questions are a place that you'd like to start, I'd be happy to engage in that conversation. Otherwise, I'll wait to read your comments on the survey.
The survey is kind of electronic?
It's electronic? Yeah, so it comes to you by, by email, so it'll, it'll be completely anonymous. I will have any way of knowing where.
Well, I want to say this is kind of interesting, um, undertaken for our Houston Community College. I don't think I've ever seen this approach before, where they actually asked for input, where they actually asked for input from board members. So, I think that's kind of unique, Ms. Moreno. Yeah, so, I think we look forward to participating in the survey to see what happens next, whatever, how long it is then. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, I just wanna say thank you, because I see that, I see that our collaboration is the key to, you know, student success, and I really appreciate all of you taking time to look into this survey, give your thoughts, give your ideas, because we need to set the direction for this college together. And our visions have to align, and that's why, this is the first time ever in the history of ACC, and this, for Chair Williams, I know you as a answer, please, excuse me, but this is the first time, this is the comprehensive input that we are seeking in the history of ACC. And, you know, it's my district honor to serve you all as the Chair of this committee, and I think at this point, we just have to move forward, march forward together. Thank you for your leadership, and each one of you is important in this process. So, please take some time to go over it if you have any questions. Wake him up even at five o'clock in the morning. Thank you for having me.
Also, the only comments I have would be, I've been on board for over ten years, eleven years, and both my children both graduated from Elsie High School, and they're taking courses at ACC as well as I have. I'm a parent of my profession, so I'm taking some courses as well. It's, it's a process sometimes. I don't know, there's been a loss, and I really talked to my, that's gone through, maybe a little over a year, so hopefully, it's kind of, but it's, it's, you know, I have the benefit that ACC has several campuses throughout the city, and the students can pick where they wanna go, and kind of class going east side, for healthcare, or, or, you know, whatever. But a lot of our students, the families ride the bus line, and it's, and it's difficult for them to get there, go in, and I've been at some of the campuses, especially here at ALI, and it's not very welcoming. It hasn't been very welcoming. When you walk in, it's, you kind of felt offset a little bit, even as an adult. So, I can imagine an eighteen, nineteen-year-old having to ride the bus, convince their parents to try to get them, drop them off, and then they go in to try to get a counselor. Oh, you have to reschedule, you have to do this. And eventually, they get tired. I'm sure you hear this. They get tired, and they say, you know what, forget it. I'm just gonna go get a job right now, and I'll go back to college again. Until somebody tried to convince them, or they tried to do it better. So, that's one, one issue that I've, I've seen in the last ten years, that hasn't been realized at ACC. The second thing is the financial part. A lot of them have been financially, they do the process, but when they apply and they get their schedule, somehow at midnight, if the night, that night, the class, they don't pay them, they get dropped. And then the class gets filled up, and now they've lost their class, and now they have to go way across town to catch, to catch a class or, or figure out. So, I mean, to get a better understanding, as soon as I talk to them, like, you gotta keep money set aside, go do the loan, do something, you know, always keep, uh, one semester money set into the bank, you know, to, to help you with that process. But I think a lot of kids, a lot of students and a lot of adults, they don't understand that process. So, it's, you know, once they're in, and they get it going, then they're good, but it's just getting them to, to get in.
So, I wanna say on an up note, though, Trustee Sonny and I have been kind of working, kicking this around for a while, and so has Trustee Hanson, before he got there, that this has always been a conversation. So, I think the, the, the plus is the fact that we are connected to have a real conversation. What I'm looking forward to is that we take it beyond, because some of the things that, that Ms. Moreno just spoke about are the things that got us connected almost seven years ago. And, and that's what we were looking for. Where is that middle-of-the-road, that thing that would be inviting? And we always said, it's not enough for us to talk college and career readiness for our students. And when they go out the back door, you know, they sense roadblocks, and we can only hold their hands for so long. You know, when, when we deliver them to ACC's door, you know, we, I'm sorry, we do, we spoil our students. They, they expect that same level of care, and, and that's the thing, Trustee Sonny and I, we connect a bit to make sure that, that we fight for that. So, I appreciate that and look forward to the survey. Anyone else? Yes?
The survey's a wonderful idea, and I'm a little glad about that. Are you going to do the same kind of thing with, like, current dual-credit students? That seems like a captive audience, that you could find out what do they want in an experience at ACC.
Yes, ma'am. So, part of what we're doing is we are surveying students actively. Surveying dual-credit students is a little tricky because of their age, and so, very often, giving surveys to students who are beneath a certain age is, is tricky for us. We are doing a lot of surveying of students. We're doing pop-up, what we're calling pop-ups, where we send a team to a location, and they interview students as they go by, they invite them into a conversation, and we're, we're doing a lot of that. Actually, part of what we're doing with that information is we're in the process of building out personas. So, these are not actual people, but they are kind of images of that classic student, right? So, the, the eighteen-year-old coming out of, out of high school, looking to go into a particular field. And then we, we talk about the things that make up their life, right? So, what it, what's it like at home on average? What, what, what kind of household income? What, what, those kinds, so that we have a better sense of who the students are and what they're telling us about, what their experience is, both in life and with us. Because we certainly have heard these comments, actually, when I get together with, with folks, I normally hear things like customer service, right? Fix your website, so those are the kinds of things. And we have, we have folks working on this. It's just, part of what we need is the mandate that we get from someone who can publicly say, you know, this is really challenging, and it's hard for my, my kids to go.
Hi, so I have a comment. So, thank you for coming out, thank you, and working with us, sitting on that ACC, a little plane meeting that we had last week. But one of the things that I'm interested in finding out more about is how we actually go and develop a true pipeline from our students who are at our CTV center, being, being able to go into your programs, because community colleges help us too, and so, how we develop that partnership. So, I'm interested in how that, how, how we might go.
So, that's gonna be a conversation for us in this board, if we're ready to tell. But that has been always the thought, Trustee Sonny, since the moment that we had organized the college.
Absolutely.
And we do the Center on Hays Road, so there's always been a conversation. So, we'll make sure that we pull it out, so that you can see that information as well. So, we want all our board members to understand what the plan is, okay?
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have, sorry, you have, well, I'm sorry.
No problem. Just, I just wanna say that I think the idea of the survey, surveying the students is a good idea. My daughter also took dual-credit to ACC, and I know that we got paid for and a lot of communication that way. And so, maybe having a consent form involved in the initial, you know, applications, I think that would be a very good, a good idea.
And their parents, right?
Yes, yes, exactly, for, for the students and the parents.
Before you walk away, I just thought about something that Mr. Chambers would probably have to update the board on. We had a big formality of, what was it, Mr. Hanson, two years ago?
P.E.S.O.R.
Was it P.E.S.O.R.? Does that go on where the students get automatically accepted to Houston Community College? Okay, so we are needing parents to participate in that survey too, so they're aware of an opportunity.
We're gonna provide a different, the, the growth from the first year.
And which, which of our students, do we begin with a sixth grader or, or what?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, can you share a real quick, because I have an important question, you may not be aware of that as well.
Well, P.E.S.O.R. Basically, is an idea, you know, people about, and of course, we all have been talking about it, Trustee Hanson has been involved in it. It's connecting the dots in such a way that we have, we share the data, the student data that you have, so we know where they're coming from, what their needs are. And initially, the idea started about that, they need the sixth graders, and like, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve graders, a pre-admission letter that they are, you know, admitted to ACC, and they know what about it, what HC offers, what GPA is required, and a whole nine-year. And these six SOR programs connecting the students to ACC with the data and sharing of the data, I would say. That's what I have, we are at that point. Now, how the information is going out to the students, that's where we need to connect the dots, because one thing I learned, and of course, I've talked to you, and for years, you and I worked together on it, how do we get the information out to the students and parents? Either the marketing effort, or joint resources, or something that needs to reach that information, we need to get that information out to the parents and students. And I'm not seeing that effort as strong as it should be. From my one trustee speaking right now, my input would be, how do we make that connection, so there's a seamless pathway for students when they come to this, to our campus, they don't have to worry about their registration. But there, there needs to be a little bit more strong collaboration, which I'm also talking to ACC, our internal administrators as to. We have done everything kind of from an outwardly standpoint, but there is, there needs to be a true collaboration. I agree with Natasha also, that the, somehow, there are gaps.
We know there are gaps there.
There are gaps there, and we need to close those gaps. And I guess with HD, your help, we need to make sure that it's seamless pathway, because a lot of students and parents are not aware what we offer. And plus, we don't wanna have duplication of programs. If you have something at ALI 5SD, ACC has the same thing. How do we make sure that they don't just, you know, have to choose one or the other kind of thing? So, that's where I am.
So, thank you. I, I kind of opened it up, you know, for that. I know that strategically, there's a lot of things that's going on, and like, Ms. Butler just brought forth, that, you know, board members that may not all know, we can kind of take for granted. I, I don't call them board members anymore. They, they're hard-working board members, so I kind of took for granted that they probably knew that information. But the piece that you were talking about at this time, I'm pretty sure we will be getting updates on that. And then, after the survey, we can talk about whether there are gaps and things like that. So, for the purpose of, you know, you guys visiting tonight, thank you so very much, but it's a big.
We'll be back again. You guys don't like to go back.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Natalie. Thank you.
James, one recognition, I was gonna start with, and, and, where's Ramon? Ramon, come up here with the drag one. Ramon Cash, sort of working in our district as a custodian in nineteen eighty-nine, retiring the thirty years to the school district, and one twenty-two years in this building. And I'm not gonna tell you how old this student is. He's been working his entire, his entire life. But I just wanted to, to express, I, I had lunch with Ramon and the other custodians the other day, and Tony, which I appreciate his every day being here, taking care of, of this building. And so, there have been a lot of people that have worked in this building over the last thirty years that have benefited from Ramon's professionalism. So, Ramon, thank you very much for your commitment to this district, and thank you for your commitment to the freedom of work in this building. Thank you very much, and good luck. It's going the extra mile. Ramon's going the extra miles. Thank you, Julie. I appreciate your time, Robert.
I don't think it looks like you're gonna stay too long. At this time, I'm gonna ask for the donation report by Ms. Jones. At this time, I'm gonna ask for the donation report by Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chambers, so, please, donations from October twenty-eighteen, eighty-one thousand dollars down to pizza, eighty-five SD, twenty-one thousand dollars raised on Hain's restaurant, eighty-five SD, five thousand dollars, eighty-four in C A, eighty-five SD, four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, Houston Blue Band, backpack bank, eighty-five SD, four thousand eight hundred and three, seven dollars, Houston Blue Band Teacher AIDS Program, eighty-five SD, four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, Panera Bread Bakery Cafe, eighty-five SD, four thousand dollars, Miss Madella, Madellas Smith, two thousand five hundred dollars, Morton Donut Shop, eighty-five SD, two thousand two hundred dollars, Hungry How's Pizza, eighty-five SD, one thousand two hundred dollars, Tail-to-Tail Training, Manta, one thousand dollars, Sam's Club Stafford, eighty-five SD, one thousand dollars, Walmart Supercenter West Park, eighty-five SD, nine hundred dollars, Al's Trucking Incorporated, Kilo, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars, Cary Brands Foundation, eighty-five SD, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, Donuts Choose Cummings, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, thirty-two cents, Donuts Choose, Albright, six hundred dollars, Donuts Choose, Ali, five hundred and nine dollars, eighty-nine cents, Donuts Choose, Ewens, five hundred dollars, Sanoco Oil, Kerr, five hundred dollars, Mr. Charles Albert, Hastings, five hundred dollars, Exxon Global Foundation, Ewens, five hundred dollars, Go with the Chick Restaurant, eighty-five SD, grand total, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars, and sixty-nine cents.
I entertain a motion to approve the donation report.
Make a motion to approve the donation report.
It's been moved by Ms. Moreno, and I think I heard Dr. Tom first, so she's second yet. All in favor of approving the donation report? So seven zero, thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I would like to honor and thank Kappa Kappa for being a new business partner. Kappa Kappa is a Texas organization chapter of the Delta Kappa Alpha Society International. D K G was founded in nineteen twenty-nine, have twelve women on the campus of University of Texas at Austin. The mission of D K G is to promote the professional and personal growth of women educators and excellence in education. Kappa Kappa was formed by ALEE teachers and now includes teachers from ALEE and surrounding districts. Our comic program receives three thousand five hundred dollars in the funds to be used to purchase stem equipment, iPads, and books for library. They also donate tablets for tomorrow's teachers at Taylor High School, that equal nine thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents in funds, and will be used to purchase tablets and student curriculum, education programs at Taylor High School. I would like to, for the following members to please come forward. Captain Spie, Kappa Kappa Co-President, Susan Samus, Kappa Kappa Co-President, Angela Allen, Kappa Kappa Secretary, and Teresa Tolliver, Kappa Kappa Member and eighty-five SD Program Manager. Next, I would like to honor and thank Group One Autoated for being a new business partner. Group One Autoated donated five thousand dollars to eighty-five SD Center for Advanced Careers Autoated Department, which will be noted on the November donation report. Group One Autoated is a Fortune 500 company with forty-nine dealerships in the United Kingdom, sixteen dealerships in Brazil, one hundred seventeen dealerships across fifteen states in the United States. Some of the local dealerships consist of, they have Cadillac, starting with Toyota, Ford, then Toyota, Advantage BMW, and Lexus of Fairleigh, to name a few. Group One has offered unpaid internships for eleventh and twelfth grade students participating in autoated technology for ALEE, mentorships with actual mechanics, and dealerships for once a week, visits, and guaranteed intern interviews for, for graduation. For students desiring to pursue college after graduation, Group One has offered tuition assistance for colleges and two reimbursement programs. The furniture will help our students to be ready for college and a career. Ms. Mike Sullivan, Director of Government Affairs, Public Affairs of Group One Autoated. Ms. Kimberly Crowe, Director of Career and Technology Education, and the others. Please come forward along with Ronnie Zondo and Jennifer Wood.
Thank you, I appreciate the show. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones, I thought you had more, more, more. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Board, I'm gonna ask for your, for your patience, I would like to make a slight change. And this is because we have a number of people who are on our pageant presentation, and I wanna allow them time. So I'm gonna ask at this time, if we look at the consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda in which you would like to have removed from discussion? Is there any item on the consent agenda which you'd like to move for consent, for?
Yes, I would like to move six point one four, consider the approval of class size waivers. Six point eleven, consider the approval of temporary construction easement, specification for nine and five hundred square feet of Heflin Elementary property for construction of check filled city diversion package number one.
Okay, third, we announced six point one four.
Yeah, six point one. So six point four and six point eleven.
Six point four. Or eleven.
I make a motion to approve the balance.
Do I have a second? It's been a motion by Mr. Moreno, and it's second by Ms. Crowe. All in favor of approving the balance? Seven zero, item number six four. It's done, I'm sorry, someone. Item number six four, Mr. Lewis, approve of class size waivers.
Um, so my questions are about the class size waivers. So I noticed that in the chart, there's all the different, like, V, V, and, so, so can you clarify what those stand for? Is it dual language?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. So in the columns by grade level, pros are by school. So for each grade, if there was a need, it would be, for one lingual would be an AM, the number of classrooms affected, D would be bilingual. And then dual language, bilingual, and then of course, AIMS is, AIMS classrooms, which we have just at Outley or at Moon, so only affected is, is Outley.
Um, and so I saw on the chart that it said the reason why we needed the waivers was because we had, like, unanticipated growth. So are we talking about increasing classes by one child, five children?
So if it was over twenty-three students, then we already made adjustments. And these, once they hit twenty-three, so most, all of these are just over the twenty-two to one ratio. And it wasn't growth per se as much as it was from the enrollment estimates, there were more enrolled in that program, or less than another, for instance, like bilingual, where we have cases where there were some that were under and some that were over. And so after all the teacher moves were made in time for parent night or open house, then these were the ones that remained. And in order to add an additional teaching unit for these, it's not that, that, say, every classroom in that grade level has more than that. They've, they roster those children up front and try not to move them, try to have as few moves as possible after the school year starts. So some are gonna be late in enrollment, because we started later again this year. And H I S D started, or earlier, I think, this year, H I S D started late, so, or quite a bit later than us. And then the Labor Day wave of new enrollees. But we actually, overall, have dropped enrollment this year. So these are classrooms that still are just over twenty-two.
So, so my question is gonna be, for those classes, have we looked at adding, like, a teacher's aide or a special somebody to come in and assist all, that's an option? And so is there one thing that you're leaning towards more, to bring in a very special in there? Or is it more of, because it said there were some ongoing things that were mentioned, adding very special, moving kids to a different school, have we decided?
No, we would not move any kids from one school to another, so no. It would be just that if they continue to grow, we would look at adding an aide or an additional teaching unit. But at this time of the year, to find a teaching unit, a teacher available, is number one, very difficult. But in some cases, if they, if there's ten classrooms and they're all at twenty-three, then if we add another teaching unit, then that's gonna drop down significantly those other classrooms, or else there would be no point in adding that teaching unit. So in some cases, we will, in some cases, we won't, because if there's three classrooms with twenty-three, and it's too much change involved in, in disproportionate spreading of those classes and breaking them up after they're already forming a relationship with teachers and their students, so.
And then my last question is for parents who want to enroll their program in those programs, do they even put on waiting lists? If I wanna go and be a dual lingual program or act faculty, how does that look like for students and their parents?
Yeah, um, all of our choice programs have the ability to have a waiting list. I don't know that we have waiting lists in any of them. I think we have room in dual, room in dual language, we have room in Mandarin, immersion, we have room in our AIMS programs. So I don't think that that's a cause for concern. The only, where we max out usually will be in the amount of pre-K classrooms we have at one school. And there'll be a waiting list, but it, actually, they're giving the other schools that have plenty of room. So we have plenty of room, we're down on actually pre-K this year also.
So do we transport them if there's a, if like a kid that's, you know, wanting to go there, is that an option? Or is that something that we don't give?
Pre-K, then we don't transport them all, so.
But, but like if you're a second, third grader kind of thing, and I'm older, or I wanna go there, and you don't have the program in class, are kids able to go to a different school and be transported? Or are parents transported?
Well, we wouldn't have a really, a waiting list for that. If they're zoned to that school, and their program's offered at that school, then we would make room.
So I was kinda concerned because of, I'm, this on the agenda is about the class size, so, it's on the video now, but I'm just going. If there's no other further discussion, I entertain a motion to approve item number six four.
I make a motion to approve item six four.
Moved by Ms. Key, I have a second. Second, and it's been, uh, second by Mr. Wen, all in favor of the six four, of the class sizes. So that would be six.
Will you open the laptop?
Okay, the six, all opposed. So there's six more. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Item number six eleven, consider approval of temporary construction easement to the City of Houston. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so, Board, you'll, you'll remember, it was, I think, about six months ago that the City of Houston approached us for an easement along the eastern edge of the Heflin Elementary property, which is actually under a set of high power lines. We granted that easement, they've, they agreed to pay us for that. I believe it was, if I remember right, it was twenty-five thousand dollars for that real estate, which is unused by us in the parcel. This is subsequent to now that they've started bidding the package. And that was for a Chelford City water diversion package. And what that is, is they're bringing water to Chelford City mud districts and to Northern Forebin County in order to stop subsidence and stop pumping water out of ground, groundwater out of the ground. So in order to do that, they have to continue to find pathways to get water from Northwest Houston, where Lake Houston is, to these different facilities that treat water for consumption in neighborhoods. So the city is delivering, this particular water line is underground. They will construct this over a course of about six months. Lots of dirt being moved and set up on the back of the property, which is all unused area on the, on the Heflin site. They're asking on this particular one to pay us, I believe it's eighty-five, yeah, eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for a construction easement, and we can consider this like a rental. So right next to that piece of property that they've already purchased the easement for to put the water line, they're gonna set up the tractors and back hose and so forth. There is a, there is a sidewalk that exits south from that property to West Park Sidewalk that walkers use. And they've agreed to relocate that sidewalk over and to fence it off so that the kids won't be in danger of getting in the construction debris. So they're gonna do that for us as part of this.
Now, the further discussion, I entertain a motion to accept, approve the temporary construction easement of the City of Houston for nine thousand five hundred square feet, six eleven. Okay, I'll set the motion. It's been moved by Ms. Key, a second. And it's been second by Dr. Tom, all in favor of approving six eleven. So seven zero, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Woods. We really appreciate being here tonight, giving that explanation. Board, we're gonna go ahead and move back to item, um, number five on the agenda, which is a pageant presentation. The board encourages and welcomes comments and inputs from patrons, but we cannot respond, deliberate, or decide regarding the subject that is not included on the posted agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please be reminded that board policy prohibits the mentioning of an employee's name when forcing a concern on complaint. The first item that we have is from Ms. Sherry Atkinson, reporting kids in the neighborhood.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sherry Atkinson, I live across the street in High Star. I am also the HOA President. Within the last probably two, two to three weeks, we've noticed a large increase of students parking in our neighborhood. I was told that, I guess, they did a sweep, I guess the kids have to pay to park on the school, but they also have to show that they have a driver's license, and insurance, and I guess, and an inspection, updated inspection sticker. So that, I guess, the kids that haven't paid or don't have those credentials have been parking in our neighborhood now, which has caused a few hiccups there. One, we've got so many kids parking in there that sometimes the trash cannot be picked up, because, you know, the trash has the, the arms that, so they can't get to the trash to pick up the resident's trash. My other concern is two, and I have noticed it, because I've been. My other concern is, too, and I have noticed it because I've been picking it up, the trash that's being thrown down in our neighborhood. Between, I know there's a large number of students, too, that have, that are skipping, and they throw trash down, and now that the students are parking in there, I've noticed even more. I mean, I've had to, I've filled my trash can up, and I've had to put my trash in my neighbor's trash can, because I don't have any place to put my trash. So, I've, I've, out of ideas of what to do, my suggestion to, to the schools would be, one, even if they're not going to pay, to have a park in the back part of front, to keep them on school grounds. That way, you guys have control over where the students are, instead of within the neighborhoods. I know the holidays are coming up, and we're just trying to, we haven't had a break in in over four years, and we're trying to keep it that way. My other suggestion would be, too, is those that don't have insurance, is to get them a ticket. Because alls you're doing putting them in our neighborhood is, your, our residents may get hit, and they don't have any way of paying it, and the residents would have to pay for it. So, I'm really big on that, because I was just, I just bought a vehicle in April, and I was having made the first payment, and I got hit, and the person didn't have insurance. So, I'm really big on, on that. So, I would appreciate any help, because I'm, I'm out of ideas of what to do. I mean, we had one guy who has his, his, I don't know if it's his mother or mother-in-law, but she's very old and frail, so he has an ambulance that comes and gets her and takes her to her doctor's appointments. And one individual's parking in front where the ambulance would pull up, and the resident asked her not to park there, and I can't, in front of here, say what she told him. But I told him, you know, so what he's doing now is he's putting his trash cans out every night where she would park, and then when school was in session, he pulls them back in every day now. So, any help is truly appreciated.
Thank you, thank you so very much. Always watched out for our students next door and brought your concerns, so thank you so very much. Item number two on the agenda, Mr. Earl Jones, School Board, I think it says live broadcast.
I have not spoken before the 80th or for quite some time. At a certain point, I have refused to make any further presentation, presentation to the Board. My efforts became directed toward changing the face of the Board from composition of five angles and two minorities. Now we see significantly changed Board mission accomplished, Board diversity achieved, though there still remains room for expanding, increasing, expanding representation. Why is this important? I saw the Nike commercial about, looks about the guy that had cerebral palsy, the guy that had cerebral palsy. People with cerebral palsy can look at him and say, "I have hope," because of what he's achieved. He just received a contract from Nike. Our children, black, white, red, yellow, brown, can look at the Board and say, "I have hope, because I see people sitting on the Board that live like me." That's important. So, it's not just a matter of can someone from different races accomplish certain things, it's a matter of our children understanding that we're all in this together. One Facebook parent publicly pondered why the district should broadcast the 80th Idol show, but for years have not served the public interest by broadcasting Board meetings, despite multiple informal requests to more than one president tonight. Referenced this past weekend in the embarrassing racially destabilizing fiasco created by the five HISB Board members. I'm in that UUAA Coalition, United Urban Alumni Association, and we will turn that attention to the 80th HISB Board and superintendent of the Board meeting is not broadcast by the next Board meeting. As the senior executive of the, of the 80th Campus-Based School Boards, I bring a simple, non-negotiable demand to the people elected and hired, you, to serve the 80th HISB community, us, broadcast the next Board meeting and all the ones that follow. When the actions of meeting are authentically reasonable to demand, you can expect to see these improvements. Public protests by any campus board, campus-based school board, parent business, and student stakeholders, coordinated student walkouts to be repeated until the Board meetings are finally broadcast, boycotts of all local businesses that you have on board here that donate anything to the 80th HISB, protest boycotts, additional steps designed to decrease revenues flowing into the 80th HISB. Is this really necessary? All we're asking is to broadcast information with the loss of the public to the public. Is it really necessary, and which of you are going to have the answer to the public for all of this that's about to happen, because it just won't broadcast? Good evening.
Ms. Jones, item number three, person speaking, Ms. Phyllis, and I hate to say your name incorrectly, Ms. Norrisweather?
Norrisweather.
Ms. Norrisweather, thank you. Going to come up, and you're going to talk about security.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Norrisweather, and I've been in the A-League area. My son has been here in school for four, five, six years, one oh six years. Come from a little small town in East Texas, and I've been on a couple of committees in this room and at the school, and I notice some things that has bothered me, I'm not going to go there tonight. I step back, kind of like you said, I step back, and I just step back, and I'm back. I have some issues that I will address later on. My, my number one issue that I have right now is, last week I was watching TV, and I saw that a student threatened to shoot hastily. Never heard anything else about it, never saw anything else about it. So, I'd like, I'd like some input on what happened. If anybody can, can tell me what happened, what happened with that student? Why was he allowed to come to school? Was his face still there? Why is all, what happened? I don't want to be a part of a school shooting. I don't want my, my child, I don't want none of your children to be a part of a school shooting. And I think that's a very serious threat, and I just want to know what happened.
Ms. Phyllis, and I know that I just told you that I wouldn't disrespect you. So, we typically do not respond to items that's not on the agenda, but what I can say is that we listen, we do take everything seriously, we do take security seriously as well, and you do understand that when you're dealing with youth, we have to protect their rights as well. So, it would be wonderful for us to go out there and announce all of the details. The blessing is that we heard about it, and that we didn't have to live through what other people has gone through.
But, okay, just, just one little question. What is protocol?
Thank you.
I work, I work at a prison, I work at a prison.
Come on now.
And I just want to know what is, what is protocol?
So, I'm going to share. I'm going to let you use, I'm going to let you use your time.
Okay, I heard what you said, it's not on the agenda, but I just had to put it out there. I will go back and look, I will go back, because I want to know what protocol is, and I am concerned. I am concerned. When you, when something like that comes up, it has to be addressed. If I go make that threat, if I go make that threat, then I have to, I have to deal with the consequences.
Absolutely.
So, and it doesn't matter, doesn't matter if you're special ed, it doesn't matter if you're average, it doesn't matter if you're super average, whatever, you still have to, because if you're outside of school, and a kid comes up, he's going to have to be addressed, he's going to have to address whatever happened. So, I think that's a very serious something that happened, and I feel like it's been kind of brushed under the cover, whatever, something happened, and I'm just concerned. I'd like to know what happened.
Okay. Thank you. We will be reaching out to you.
Thank you.
And talk to you so we can have that information, because you're absolutely right, and everything that can happen, there are protocols.
Right.
There are protocols, and I, and, you know, we try to make sure that all the protocols are covered, not just.
... to avoid a lawsuit, and to avoid the headache of getting lawyers, of calling the police, and trying to get the police to side with them. Just because he had a dash cam, he was able to avoid every single headache that occurs when we get to the accident, and when the other party lies. In the past, when we didn't have access to dash cams, we had to bring the lawyers about the case, we got upset when the party lied, and we had our time wasted. My goal is to protect my community by providing dash cams as a solution to this problem until the front attempts made against 80th HISB. That's all I have. I really watched the video, it's a nice video. I have a little more sex left. Thank you.
We look forward to you standing up to the center.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for. As I was saying, thank you to all my patrons who participated tonight. This time, Board, I would like to go ahead and move into item number. Item number seven, Human Resource Annual Staffing Report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chambers. On behalf of the Human Resource Department, tonight I'm here to present our annual staffing report, and most of the information that I'm here tonight talks about our data from seventeen, eighteen school years, so that's the information we can present. Tonight, as I present this information to you, I want you to picture a scenario in your head. I'd like to think, for you to think of yourself as a teacher, either an experienced teacher or first-year teacher, wanting to start a career in a district. As you think about this, I would like you to think about the things I shared with you tonight, to see if we would be able to convince you to be either hired and into our district or remain in our district, to retain our, your presence in our district. As I share the information from our findings, I'm going to base it on research and information from our district, as well as from national research. So, the first thing I'd like to share with you is the teacher supply demand. Every year, TDA provides us with a projection of what the school year is going to look like in the future, and from the last year data, what it looked like is where we're going to have some deficits in our teachers. As you can see, there's a region, and there's a state. In the region, you can see that there are going to be fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-nine teachers that were needed to be hired, region four area, and for the state, you can see the sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety. Another piece of information I'd like you to pay attention to is the turnover rate. If you look at the turnover rate for the state, it's at seventeen point two, and the state is at sixteen point four. In other words, that means that, that percentage of teachers are leaving the district or leaving the profession. So, one of the other pieces of information as we go through this, one of the things that you need to keep in mind, that when you're in a high, high needs school, like many of our schools in A-League, the percentages may be bigger or larger. One thing we're very proud of is what we look like in the region. As I stated before, this is region four. If you look at the turnover rates, you can see that A-League is at twelve point five. If you look at that in comparison to districts that mirror us, for example, like Alton at eighteen point four, Fort Bend at fifteen point five, Goose Creek, you can see that they are at fourteen point five. So, some of the districts with the same kinds of needs look a little different than we do. We have a better retention rate, and so that's something I'd like you to pay attention to as we go through this, and share some of the initiatives that we're taking to hopefully increase that or make that a better retention rate. As you may know, one of the efforts that we had last year was how can we make, how can we recruit and make sure that people are hearing about the good things that we're doing? So, we had a committee come together, and we found some things that we highlighted last year in our website. Some of the things that we talked about were our staff pay and our benefits, staff development. One of the things that we hear from our teachers in our exit surveys is our staff development is number one, that they are very appreciative about the efforts that we make in how we train our teachers. And then the third thing that came out in our exit surveys was relationships, the relationships that were built among our staff members and our teachers and our, and our students. So, those were the things that they mentioned that they found unique in A-League. The other thing that we noted is that we felt, as we got to know our employees, they communicated to us that it was very important that if they could be ambassadors for us. So, we encouraged them to share the good things that are happening and help us recruit in our recruiting efforts. And what we found is that we get quality hires, because they're people that they know and that they recruit to us. We found that it maintains our culture, our family, and the way we want A-League to be, because they have the same characteristics, the same ethics, the same goals, and they also build a family, and build a family mindset of family, they wanted to be part of the family. So, what you may or may not know is that we do offer a stipend to teachers who do recruit. So, if they find somebody that they feel like would be beneficial in hiring, we offer a five hundred dollar stipend to those teachers to help us recruit some of these strong teachers. The state also provides what areas are going to be shortage area, as in, as you can see, for the seventeen, eighteen school year, there are the areas that we see in our districts. There's a bilingual ESL shortage, CTE, computer science, ESL, tech app, math, and special ed. As you can see, this year, science was not a shortage area. One of the things that we do do with our shortage areas, we do provide stipends to the individuals based on our shortages. You may be asking what causes these shortages? Many things, factors that we cannot control, such as people in the math and computer science world, CTE world, they find higher-paying jobs outside of education, so it's very difficult to recruit those people. So, for those reasons, we have to find innovative ways to recruit them so that they can come work in the school district. But those are the shortages for the state of Texas. One of the things that I do want to share with you, I mentioned earlier, research states that high-poverty schools experience a substantial higher rate of turnover rate. But one thing I do want to share with you about A-League, we, if you look up there, you can see from zero to thirty-four percent free and reduced lunch, that's how they rate poverty in a school, their total number is at twelve point eight of a retention rate. A-League HISB is at twelve point five. So, even with the research, our district is retaining teachers better than even many of the districts and our counterparts. So, what the research says, what is it that is making teachers leave, or why aren't we able to keep them? So, the research says, if you're going to be hiring people, these are the things that you need to keep in mind. Focus the needs on the new teachers. So, one of the things that we do for a district, we do a mentor program. Our teachers are, once they're hired, they get a mentor for a full year. A mentor teacher is provided stipend to coach them, to provide support to them, to attend meetings with them, to help them go into the classrooms and observe, to give them some good teaching techniques. Patricia Brady does a beautiful job with this, and she oversees that program. We focus on training for all of our teachers, so that all of our teachers are more supported and able to work and, and do the things that they need to do in the classroom. We provide opportunities, and research shows this, for leadership, teacher leaders. Many times, teachers find that they stay in a role they want to be teachers, but there are not a whole lot of roles out there that can allow them to teach and be leaders as well. A-League is unique in that, that we have specialists, we have teacher leaders on the campus that are able to still teach, but also be a leader. We create opportunities for teachers to have planning time together. That empowers teachers, because they're able to share their craft, they're able to share their skill set. And then the last thing is that we also, we try to find out what's going on in the school. So, we do make a big effort to get feedback from our staff. Mr. Chambers has a staff committee, which is the superintendent's advisory council. They're representative of the district. We get teachers from all over the district, and we ask questions of them, what can we do to do a better job of recruiting and a better job of retaining? The other thing is we do an exit survey, so we can hear back from our, our teachers and our staff members, is why is it that you chose to leave the district? Our current teacher demographics, one of the things I want to point out to you is that, as the research shows, a lot of the teachers that are leaving either the career or, or the campus is because of, happens in the early years. So, if you look at that chart, you can see from zero to five So if you look at that chart, you can see from zero to five, we have thirty-five percent of the teachers leaving ALEAF are new teachers. And that saddens us because we spend so much of our time and our money training these teachers. So one of our efforts is we make sure that we provide these people with mentors. We try to reach out to these teachers about how can we support you so that we can have you stay in ALEAF. So as you can see, throughout the zero to five, that's our biggest group that leave the district.
Well, just one point she said that about you. If you just gotta report, you have to go over there. Thirty-six percent of every teacher in the state of Texas pre-k to twelfth grade is between years, one in five years of grades. So over a third of every classroom teacher in Texas. And that is obviously a growing trend, and it's a growing concern. Not because teachers in New York don't have to teach, but we are doing it. And our building, it's not even a level of zero to five year teachers, or specific content. Anyway, just to put it in state perspective of what she's telling me about our district, everyone is about where she's going in terms of experience.
Has that been the trend for years?
Yeah.
Have you heard that be going on, or...
Reason I'm just scratching my mind, I'm getting into a speech, but talking about some of this from state perspective. And if you go back and look for the last ten years, like in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year, at that time, it was like twenty-two, twenty-three percent in zero to five, and every year it was a little increase. The only year it did not increase was in two thousand and eight, when the pressure was at a place, and no one was hiring anybody. And other than that, and after that, it actually grew three percentage points to make up for lost time. The last two years has taken, kind of a gradual growth in the last two years, despite the war. And all the numbers she gave earlier, the teacher shortage in the state, the teacher shortage in the county, that is across all the counties, is across the board. Even more recognizable in your family or ESL, foster English courses as well as your math. Does people talk about the trend rate, the teacher shortage trend rate? It's a threat, it's been a risk.
And so one of the things that we try to do, obviously, is we, because these are new teachers, and many of these new teachers come to us out of programs where they've never been teaching, like ACC programs, that their capacity to be a good teacher is there, but yet they haven't had the experience. So we have to be creative on how to, one, prepare our teachers, because one of the reasons they say they leave is because of lack of support. So we have to find ways to prepare these teachers in a different way than what we used to. And I'll be sharing that throughout our presentation. But the other thing I wanted you to note up here is we will look at the years of experience in ALEAF. And the reason why we point that out, because it's very important to us. We have a certain way that we do our staff development, that every teacher will receive certain kinds of pieces of staff development, and we have a plan for every teacher. So it's very important for us to make sure that we keep our current teachers because they've already been given the staff development, and they have the knowledge, and they have the capacity to do well with our students because we work with them for so long. So it's very important for us to not only recruit them, but once we get them, we wanna keep them.
Do you think a part of that is because of our salaries and our benefits package? Is that forty-five percent? Yeah, we didn't have such a great, I mean, if we had a high salary, you know, one best in the city, and even our benefits package, I could imagine what our number would be on the zero to five, if I made it to be large.
I do think that's a big part of it, and as I've been doing a whole lot of research on this, that's just one piece. And to tell you the truth, the bigger piece is how they feel supported, how they feel the relationships they have with their coworkers, with their students. It's all about, kind of again, the meaningful work that they do. They wanna feel valued, they wanna feel purpose, the payment that we give them, as well as the relationships they build within the community, and with their coworkers and their supervisors and their students. So it's a little bit of everything, and I'll explain a little bit more of that in a minute. So, one thing that's important to notice, just as Mr. Chambers mentioned, many of the teachers that are resigning, we get them trained, and then they leave. It's kinda like a revolving door. If you look up their teachers' years of experience in education from last year's data, we had fifty-two percent of our teachers from zero to five years leave. So what that says to our instruction department is, train them, train them, train them, and now they go, and they're very well-trained, and then they either go somewhere else or to a different profession. So our goal is to make sure we keep them here.
The majority are changing profession. Staggered, or staggered. If that weren't happening, the teachers who were leaving, whether they could be going somewhere else, we could kind of balance and start, you know, the state. I mean, we're growing, but I can work, we're not growing, we're just like, I'm just... But it's, it's a phenomenon, it's not a phenomenon, it's natural, I can know what's happening. But the majority would be going out of profession. As long as the economy is moving forward, and there's always a job in the product sector, particularly in the man's trades, and in some of the areas of Wichita, and the science majors, almost certainly, you have to be an engineer, if you can work in the petrol industry, you can compete.
And just to begin, so I'm gonna share what the research says, why they choose to leave, and just as Mr. Chambers mentioned, part of it's leaving for that reason, but it's partly, it's the things that we are requiring them to do because the state requires us to have them do that. And I'll explain that to you in just a second. So as you can see, as we look at the resignations, which again, is our young teachers, that are inexperienced teachers, that we, you know, we build them, and we get them ready for our kids, and then they leave us. And so that's something I know the instruction department's working very hard to get them prepared for our students. So they're really working at trying to have conversations with people. And currently, we're working on a new exit survey that's been asking more questions. I'm working with the Public Relations Department to find out exactly why, and then we're gonna do some follow-up calls. So our new teacher demographics, just to share with you, that we do have about forty percent of our new teachers from an ACC program, and sixty percent of our teachers are traditional. ACC programs are awesome and great. However, one thing that they do lack is that they don't allow them to have the experiences that they get through the traditional. So the school district's required to, well, we feel like we need to allow them to do that because they're at a disadvantage that they come into the schools if they haven't had been working around children, and they haven't had that exposure. So one of the things that we try very hard is making sure that we give those ACC teachers opportunities to have good mentors, co-teaching those types of things. But as you can see, that's the data for our district. Forty percent are ACC new hires and sixty percent from the traditional. Both are excellent teachers, some require different kinds of things. Some of the things that we've been doing, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about recruiting and really share a lot more about the retention piece, but some of our recruiting efforts, and many of these things did come from our advisory committees and the feedback that we asked them to provide us. So we attend job fairs, but this year, and in the past, we hosted more job fairs than what we've done in the past. This year, we did our ancillary job fair, which allowed us to do one in the summer for local people around the area, and that was able to help us hire for our custodians, to have transportation, crossing guards, our family engagement, our daycare. So we were able to get some of our parents that wanted to work with us, come and work with us. So we did do that. We had one today for bus drivers as well, because we tend to have a shortage in bus drivers. So we did have one for there. And then this year, we also had local people contact us, and we attended their job fairs, either at churches or those type of things. So we attended those in hopes that we could repack some of those people as well. The other thing that we do is university partnerships and student-teachers. That's a traditional thing that we've always done. We've added to our university partnerships, and so we have some great relationships with different universities, and we've added to that. Of course, our competitive teacher pay, that's something that we always advertise. And I think the bigger part of that, again, is from the good, strong work that I give to Mr. Woods in the Department for Benefits. That's what really sells us, is our benefits piece, so we appreciate that. One of the things, again, we comprise this committee, our HR advisory committee, of all types of people, with teachers, paraprofessionals, and different people, to help give us information that we need to know about to help recruit people. We go, each of our directors go out to the campuses, and they meet with the administrators, and they have campus talks. Tell me what we need, what should we do differently? How do we need to support you? What kinds of teachers should we be getting? We also do a communication plan. We work with our communication department, the committee recommended that we put more things on the website that showcased ALEAF, so we have some videos of our teachers on there. We have wellness videos on there, so we are trying to showcase ALEAF in a different way. So if you take a look at our website, it looks a little differently than it did a year ago. And then the third thing, or the last thing that I wanna share with you is that we did do several different partnerships that are outside of what we normally do, and this, I think, is gonna be a huge asset to our district. We're currently working with Relay, and you've heard me talk to them before. But Relay is a program that takes our employees that are currently, have a bachelor's degree, and we hire them as an intern, which they work in the paraprofessional. A little while ago, you asked about where to be, you know, how do we support those teachers with extra kiddos in the classroom? So we intentionally put those types of people into those classrooms that are a little bit over the number, at forty-three or twenty-four, for example, in our dual-language program. So we intentionally put those interns in those classrooms so that there's two people in there, and that intern is getting quality instruction about how to be a teacher. And I went out to visit them to say, okay, how's it going now? There's nobody around here to tell us what it should look like. Tell me how you feel. Do you feel better prepared than you would if you just walked into a classroom through ACC? The comments that came from them were amazing. They said that, as they learn a skill set, for example, they had to learn how to do circle time, they practiced it with a week with a teacher, they watched the teacher, the next week, they were responsible for that. Then the following week, they had to teach math, so they had circle time and math. So they gradually gain more, step more parts of the lesson that they are able to teach, and then constantly getting feedback from either the mentor teacher or from the Relay person that comes in to support them. So it's a great program, and we're working with them to see what we can do more in the future. Good reason, Houston, we mentioned that to you, it's teachforhouston.org. It's a two-piece to that. We're going to be able to recruit. It's a platform for communication that we can be recruiting teachers. So what they've asked us to do, for Good Reason Houston, they've asked us to provide them with a teacher ambassador that will speak on behalf of ALEAF. So we've asked Robin Toy, he's accepted that, and he's gonna be our ambassador, and he's gonna be on this website that's going to be statewide, and sharing all the good things that we're doing in ALEAF. There are public service awareness, so they're gonna be putting billboards out there for us, they're gonna be putting things out on the websites. There are digital recruiting platforms, which means that there would be a site where individuals that are interested in teaching can contact this site, and there's gonna be a teacher on the other, and it may be some of our teachers. There's gonna be a teacher answering questions to people that want to become teachers, so it's kind of an active site. And then the last part is they're gonna do on-ground activities with our TAFI students. So the people that want to become teachers are going to, they're gonna come to meet with our TAFI students and work with them and help them get a plan to become, follow a pathway to become a teacher. And then, of course, the last thing we did, last year we started working really strongly with our TAFI group. They're sure we're continuing that partnership. We'll be going in November to, they're gonna have a competition. We'll be going there, and we're gonna do practice interviews with them, scoring them, helping them through that, but we're still continuing that relationship. So what does the research say? Research says that teacher preparation support, that will help your teachers want to stay. If we give that kind of support, that's gonna be a better outcome for us. That if we put a lot upfront, then we'll have better results. School leadership. Teachers who report lack of school leadership, there's gonna be a turnover, so we work very strongly with our administrators to look at their culture climate surveys so that there's a good relationship between them. And then the third thing, again, is the compensation, just as you mentioned. Mr. Moreno, compensation is a big motivator for me. So why do the teachers leave? So when the research came out, this is nationwide, this is from the Learning Policy Institute from two thousand and seventeen, and just as Mr. Chambers mentioned earlier, they either leave the profession or the campus. Fifty-five percent of the people say that they're dissatisfied, and they leave the professional altogether. And those people are going to jobs outside of education. If they're dissatisfied with the campus, they're going to other places, but it's a sixty-six percent are saying that's their number-one reason for leaving. And so what does that mean? So it does deeper to say, what are you dissatisfied? And what the research says, number one, assessment and accountability. That we're putting all of these requirements on testing and accountability that they feel like they can't teach, that they have to teach based on the test, and that they can't teach. And this is nationwide, and this is statewide, not just ALEAF. Administrative issues, and I'll explain that in just a second. The satisfaction with teaching career, and then with the working conditions. So I'm gonna explain and define what each of those means so that you have a better understanding of each of those. So when they talk about administrative issues, they're talking about there's too many intrusions that they, you know, as they're teaching, they have to stop and go take pictures, or they have to stop and go to the library, that they don't have full-time teaching. Discipline issues, they feel that they can't teach because they're making, and this is statewide, nationwide, that there are discipline issues that are not being handled. Not enough autonomy because of the testing, they have to teach a certain way. Lack of influence on policies and procedures and practices because of the things that we have in place. The job description, again, some duties, meetings, required events, it's not just teaching anymore, so we've gotta find ways to support them. And then working conditions such as lack of resources. And then some of the teachers in this survey indicated that if they're in a high-needs campus, they feel like they're being overwhelmed and being compensated the same as people in not as high-needs. So that was one of the reasons that they left that campus to go to another campus. So those are things that made me aware that those are things that we need to look at in the future. How can we help support those people? So in closing, some of the things that were suggested through the research or through our exit surveys or through our committees, these are the things that we found out that we need to do. We need to give people a voice. We need to build relationships with our staff, know our staff, proactively hire to ensure the best fit. That's something we've learned even more recently. Sometimes it's task to talent, making sure you have the right teacher at the right campus. Teachers can be very successful at different types of campuses, and we, as administrators, need to make sure we're putting them in the right place and in the right grade level. Clarify expectations and motivate the employees. Provide an effective mentor program, which we're constantly working on. The leaders role to get people to where they want to be, have, you know, that's really what teach, has been really taking that role, where there's conversations between the employee and the administrator. Create trust. And then one of the things I mentioned was get rid of the crazy behaviors, get all the distractions. If people are misbehaving, we don't want them. And that's what teachers are saying about other teachers. Consistency in management, if they ask the question of one administrator, they want the same answer. Celebrations, setting goals with staff, coaching, 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 helping us get better in our career. And then determining from our employees what motivates them so that we can reward them in the way that they wanna be rewarded. And then obviously, the last thing was compensate fairly. So one of the things I do wanna share with you is that we are looking at our compensation. Each year, we do this, but we are looking at our compensation to make sure that we are paying people for the work that they are doing. And as you can see, our salary is one of the highest salaries. I do not have a comparisons of the benefits. Once I put that piece on there, I will send that out to you because that's really what puts us over the top in our compensation. So that's all I have for you tonight. Do I have any questions?
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, I'm looking at the data, it's kinda funny. So thank you so very much. Any questions, anyone?
I have a couple of questions. Or actually, a quick representation, a lot of information. Can I go back to our accountability issues and so forth? And I see identified in several slides, top three issues, administration, or campus leadership and so forth. Can you go back to, can you go back to the slides on, it was those top three, it was like the reasons why you leave?
That's nationwide, that one?
No, it's, it's...
So it's a different question support. I think we're doing great. I think our professional development is like top of the line in the city. People come to us, and I hate that people leave, or teachers leave and go other places. But at least we're educating them to be better teachers than in helping students statewide or even nationwide. So I'm kind of okay with that, if they have to leave and better to still help with the children. School leadership. This is a thing, I understand it was identified here, the next slide, the next two slides. And I know you all are working on it, and every year seems like we're working on that. But I'd like to see a plan.
Come on now.
On what's happening. It's kind of going back to accountability, my question before. We know what we're doing. What's new that we're doing now that's gonna help with that? And so, I mean, it's part of our fault. You know, we're not, in some ways, holding our superintendent accountable. Again, they're not holding administration, the top administration, which is now holding the campus administration.
So we have done something different based on Mr. Chambers' request. We have taken the climate survey information and disaggregated it, provided it to the area soup, so they are definitely certainly working. We disaggregated it to every piece, like where is the issue coming from, based on the adult piece, and provided that to our area soups. They're definitely working with their campus administrators because they have that data, data.
So is there a way that we could, I guess, is there a way we can give some story for my campus? So what's happening? What issues are finding out per campus? And then what our area is doing, what our district administration is doing, and obviously what you're doing? You know, in order to help resolve that. Because I think that's kind of going to a root. You know, that's an issue that you identify in several kind of top-three issues. Compensation, we can't always control that. Teaching, support, we're working on that, but that's part.
And again, I wanna say to you, and I appreciate you sharing that, that this is nationwide, that's a nation issue. that this is nationwide, that's a nation issue as well. And so it's something I think through the, everybody is dealing with those things. And we do pay attention to those top three things. We definitely look at each of those three things.
Right. And I'm not saying this is teacher principals and whole. I mean, they're doing phenomenal. They're all working, you know, working very hard, working, you know, twenty-four, seven. I mean, they're just bringing their bags for these campuses, for their staff. I understand that. You know, but if we can, you know, we, I just don't have, I don't have a feel of what we are doing.
That's because we probably haven't given you a feel. But we have, and she alluded to it. We have something extremely different that we use the survey information to increase some metrics, to make some decisions. So it's about, based on, you know, who's strong in survey is, who's weak in survey is. And we're utilizing that information and metrics to help grow these, like offerings. And it's going to include people in this room as well. But the, let me, let me, we just start this. Let me put it together in a way which can explain it to you guys.
And part of it's coming from some of the training that we received in leading and tasking training just recently, this last one. There's a lot of focus on accountability and asking the board members to, not necessarily getting the leads of it, of like, you know, whether the principals and staff really day by day, but oversee what the superintendent is doing. And this guy can also look down to the campus administration to see what they're doing. So that when, you know, people come in and we get major presentations, we get issues regarding some issues in campuses. We're like, oh, we understand that campus. This is what we're doing. This is the plan at this particular campus for these particular students, for this particular staff. This is what we're doing. And we can hold, and we can answer those questions. But right now, we're just statewide, nationwide, district-wide. Not just my thing. I don't know how other, other people are trying to.
We, we, I was going, just what I just referred to you. I was waiting on the staff. You were going to give. But we do that, and it's extremely fair. That is a question that, from a governmental perspective, you have a view. I don't think this is across, no, no. This is, I'm trying to what you're asking and what we should deliver to you. You tend to know what you're doing.
Again, not that I can go in there and fix it, but that's what, you know.
Y'all don't get it.
No, I actually just wanted to bring back what Tracy Moreno said. Just in regards to, as I know in the past, we've talked about the climate survey and how it's being used. And so just knowing and hearing about how you all are using that and how you're measuring it is important for us.
Sure.
And so I appreciate that you all, that you all do that and that you have it. And I know that there, you know, previous work, we're in the back. I believe what Tracy Moreno is just asking for is just that measurement of how, you know, here are our goals and how we do it with meeting those goals. Because I believe that that's something that we, as a governing body, that's part of our role to oversee that and making sure that we're doing what we need to do on our end to support that.
Sure.
Let me just end by saying, you know, I'm conflicted because I'm someone that fell into ACP within the last four years. And I can pretty much say, yeah, in five years, I can understand why people would be out. I'm really good. It's unfortunate. And these things, Mr. Moreno, I'm going to agree with this, with Dr. Powell in saying this is, the reason why I said that this is nationwide because it's not just a conversation that I hear in ALEAF or wherever else I am. Anyone who's in education right now, this is, this is not, this is not what it was when we went to school. This is not what it was when our children went to school. This is not. It's so far different now. And I could tell you from an ACP point of view, yes, people want good, strong leadership. Because you have people from other industries who have a high expectation of what that leadership is going to do. And I would agree, we need to understand what that looks like for us. And, you know, and I do, I do try to pull myself back because it's a soft spot for me right now. It really is. But, and I say that because, you know, as I was telling Mr. Superintendent Chambers, when you come out of the industry, from corporate or any other industry, you expect there to be protocols and needs to work a certain way. And it's shocking to find out. And I think that that's why a lot of people say, oh, no, I can't do this because it's so defined everywhere else. And education might have, it seems to be all over the place. You know, but that's why we have board members who care like they do to say, hey, if our employees are feeling like it's over the place, then it's our responsibility to not just compensate them.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? It's to, you know, help encourage them to grow their careers because it's a large investment. It still is a large investment. It's not cheap to become a teacher. It's not. So, but anyone else? So thank you so very much. And thank you guys for letting me say my piece. Thank you.
Okay, good. Good evening, Board, Mr. Chambers. And tonight, before I guess I've gone with a presentation, or one of my final presentations, you're going to hear from Tamika Anderson Abernathy. She is our coordinator of our after-school programs. They've had a little name change, so I'm going to let her tell you about that. But just for some of you who do not know Tamika, she has been a teacher in our district and she's also been a technology specialist. So she, you know, has a very good perspective on, you know, having an academic focus in our after-school programs. So I'm going to bring her up at this time. And she's, lots of things have changed since she's been president of her life.
And she'll probably get upset, but I'm going to say it anyway. She was my son's third grade teacher. He's only twenty-six tomorrow.
My seventeenth year here. So maybe a whole while. So thank you, Board, for allowing this presentation. As stated, we have gone through the name change and we want to let the secret out. So, top secret property of CIA, and I am releasing this secret. So this is where we were for many, many, many years. ALEAF After-School Program. And in our planning meeting with the Federal Programs Department, we discussed possibly a name change while we were discussing what we were doing moving forward. And this upcoming year, a name change came up. So we all ran with it. We had our students involved in the program, over thirty-hundred students from our tuition base to our grant-funded programs who actually participated in voting on our new name. Some of the names, or the top three names, was SINK, Serving Youth in the Community, CIA, Children Interacting After School, and INVEST, Inspiring Our Next Visionaries. So CIA was the winner. Children Interacting After School. And I believe it has been very positive because our students are excited to say that they're a part of CIA instead of saying, oh, I'm a part of the after-school program. They would probably say that I'm a part of CIA. And with this, our logo came from, we had a collaboration with the CTE Department and the high schools students to come up with a logo. So our logo actually was created by Juan Espinoza from Taylor High School. So this is our vision statement. We've changed it up a little bit over the years, but it's basically the same. The first and the most important piece of it is that we want to ensure that our students participate in a safe, inclusive program with fun, hands-on, age-appropriate activities that includes increasing academic success. And how are we increasing the academic success in the program? Is that we're enhancing character development and building life skills through educational, recreational, enrichment, and community activities throughout the program. So through the years, we started in nineteen ninety-six through grant funds. And with those grant fund, through the grant-funded programs, we had seven. So we started with seven programs. We moved to nine programs in two thousand six, two thousand nine, when grant funded, when grant funds ran out. We're always looking for ways to increase funding within our programs. So we did receive another Twenty-First Century Grant as well as an ASAP grant through the city of Houston. Houston's Kids was added to the component when Katrina and Rita hit within those years. And then we added to tuition base for those campuses that lost the grant funding. And then just moving ahead to two thousand thirteen, fourteen, Comet was added as well as our partnership with ACDE. And then today, as of right now, we have thirty-eight programs in the district. So these are our goals as for this year, as the District Improvement Plan goals. As I mentioned before, you know, increasing enrollment and funding is always at the top of our list. We want to make sure that we're reaching as many students as possible within our program. And how are we going to reach as many students as possible is getting the funding. And so we were fortunate enough this year through the Save the Children to receive some funding to supplement tuition. So we were able to provide some funding to assistance for four of our campuses through Save the Children. Right now, as of October, our enrollment for our tuition-based campuses is around three hundred students. And our Twenty-First Century campuses, we are possibly at four, four, four fifty students. Our Twenty-First Century campuses, we must have a hundred and twenty students per campus by the end of the school year in order to meet grant expectations. So at the end of the school year, we should have approximately three thousand students enrolled in the program. Our second goal is to increase program marketing. And we are so very proud of all of the marketing and rebranding that we have put in place for CIA for this school year. We were able to send out colored postcards to our parents at the campuses with our tuition base, at our tuition-based campuses, just to promote our program in a different way. We were able to email out parents at all of those campuses to promote and let them know about the program as well as the communicator that goes out in August to each one of the homes. We also are continuing with the campus call-outs. Each nine weeks, we suggest that, you know, we speak with principals and ask them to, you know, call out to the parents and remind them that CIA is on their campuses so they know that we're there to provide a service for their students and that they're safe. They don't even have to leave the campus for the most part. And then our promotional video, which I will show at the end. It kind of sums up our program in two minutes or less. And then our third goal for this school year is to increase awareness through professional development and communication. And we do this through orientation. So we call, all of our teachers are required, all of our staff members, teachers, parent professionals, student workers, volunteers, they must go through an orientation so they know about our program before entering and stepping into the campus. So we require this year that they had to go through the orientation before starting. In the past, we would be a little bit lenient and allow them to start working. But we found, you know, that once they got on campus, they really didn't know how to service our students on the campus according to how CIA expectations are. And again, this is just an awareness of, you know, for promoting our program within each one of the campuses that we're on. Another thing that we changed with our names, kind of our setup. So we looked at our typical day in the after-school program and we, you know, sat down and said, what could we change? So we didn't just sit down and say, what could we change? And just left it like that and started changing things. We went out and had some campus visits. We visited campuses with after-school programs outside of the district. And after we came back and reconvened, we found out that one of the pieces that we were missing was that social piece for our students. So as you can see, last year's program or the year's past program, we kind of were very rigorous. We went from snack to homework. And it was like snack, okay, you have ten minutes to eat your snack. And let's get to homework. Let's do it. And then go into our other activities within the day. This year, what we have implemented is a snack social. So during this time, the students are able to not, we don't rush them to eat their snacks. And then the students have the opportunity to, to do things that they might not like being able to do or have ever experienced at home, like board games. You know, it's surprising how many students don't interact with board games these days. So we implemented board games. We implemented where they're able to go outside. We have that recess time, that just that relaxation time. And then when our intermediate and middle schools, we do allow them to use their cell phones for a little bit just during this time so they can just get it out and socialize. On Fridays, we implemented restorative practice circles. So every Friday at each one of our campuses, you should see them in restorative circles where they will have the opportunity to build strong relationships through dialogue with their teacher and their, their other, with their friends in the program. And everything else, pretty much the same. Homework and the difference between the two is homework comes after the social hour. And we kind of implemented the academic piece with homework. Instead of separating them out, we assist the students with their homework a lot more than planning just that academic piece. So these are our campuses. Our tuition-based campuses, those are parent-paid programs where parents, they have the opportunity to pay for their students to come to the program. Those campuses, for example, Alexander, that has a campus in parentheses, they actually receive their programming at that campus in parentheses due to low enrollment. So Alexander, for example, last year, we had to merge them with Leesman because of low enrollment. We always say that we're not here to make a profit and, you know, definitely, but we want to break even. You don't want to, you know, go in the red or the hole. So with Alexander, we had fifteen students. That wasn't, we were not able to sustain the program at Alexander, but we found a campus nearby. So in having that conversation with transportation and building that relationship with them, transportation agreed to add our students from Alexander on a route that goes to Leesman. So we free of charge for tuition base. We're able to transport our students to that campus and parents are able to pick them up from that campus for after-school program. So they've lost no type of service. So we're still providing that to them. And then we have our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers or our After-School Centers for Education. This is a grant fund through TEA. And with this funding, the students are able to go to these schools or these programs for free. So this is the funding that we are receiving this year. So first, you know, tuition base, we, for the year, and we tell parents that we operate on about nine dollars a day. And if you look at it, it's fifteen, one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars for the entire year. For those parents at four of those tuition-based sites who are not able to afford and goes through and are approved through the financial assistance, we receive funding from Save the Children this year in an amount of forty-nine thousand dollars to offer tuition adjustments or to offer financial assistance to assist those parents with that. or to offer financial assistance, financial assistance to assist those parents with that payment. This school year, we were approached by First STEM and they are supplying robots and materials and competition fees for our, for our robotics program and the program. So seven of, I'm sorry, twelve of our campuses received that grant. And after this presentation was made, we were approached again to allow our, our last two campuses to participate as well. So all of our campuses within CIAA will be participating in robotics this school year. And then the Twenty First Century, we're receiving a little bit over one point six million, million for eight campuses. And then lastly, with ACDE, we have the After-School Strategic Investment Grant, which is AIS, for our last tuition-based campus that didn't receive the ACDE partnership funding, we're receiving thirty-nine thousand dollars for them for specialized vendors. So these are some of our partnerships that we have for this upcoming year. And they stem from activities like providing up their field trips, to STEM activities, to robotics, to golf, arts, the arts, where the, the dance instructors or face painting instructors will come in to assist our students, educate classes, theater, and dance. This is how we staff the program. So we have site leaders and site coordinators that runs the programs at each one of our campuses, teachers, program assistants, and contractors. Our program assistants are like, they're, they're parent professionals. We have parent professionals from the district, we have students who are also a part of the program, so high school students to college students. With our high school students during the summertime, we actually sat down with Ms. Dr. Powell and the Taffy group and spoke about how we could collaborate. So we actually started in the summertime paying our Taffy students to work within our program so they could get that experience and have the pipeline of working in our program and going to college and A-leeve and then coming back to teach in A-leeve. That's kind of the plan that we discussed as far as the pipeline for our college, for our high school students. And then we have the college students that, that went to school in A-leeve, who are going to college in the A-leeve surrounding the area and coming back and working for our program. The trainings, is one of our goals that we said that we're gonna put in place. I mentioned orientation earlier. We also have a training called pre-service, which is mirrored through the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services because we used to be licensed at most of our sites. So we just continued on with this pre-service training because we felt that it was beneficial. We also require for our staff to be CPR and first aid certified. And then as needed, we provide curriculum training because we do get specialized curriculum and we're, we want the teachers to implement it correctly. So we would pull those teachers' hand with those particular curriculums and training upon those. So this is our data. The after-school program students outperforms students who are not in the after-school program. And it's not about, about much, but we take every win. And then of course, attendance, if the students enjoy the program so much that they come to school. They have to attend school in order to be a part of the program. So they come to school, their attendance, the attendance rate rises. This is an executive summary from our last cycle grant that ended in July. And this is from a outside, external evaluator. And I just want to just, just focus on the piece where the site range or the overall score is from seven point five to nine based on qualitative data and that we averaged with the, this past grant an eight point seven, which reflects strong implementation with consistent, consistently high quality. So we are very proud of this and are continuing with that high-quality program. So teamwork. We work as a team with the district and other programs that are established. We work with Houston's Kids and the YMCA. I actually attend meetings for Houston's Kids and YMCA and share, you know, everything that's happening within our program and they share with me and we collaborate. Also Comet. We formed a partnership with Comet just this past year and I've learned a lot about Comet. Mr. Chambers actually invited me to one of the meetings to see how we could expand Comet within the, within the school district. So within this school year, we was within the, on the campus. So bringing Comet or extending Comet to the, to the campus from the apartment come led us. So we actually do have a couple of our campuses that were a part of the grant last year. Collins, Landis-O'Connell, and Pillow, who are actually having, who actually has Comet in their, on their campus this year. So now no service was, the service wasn't stopped because we couldn't provide that service for them anymore. And I love this quote, "It is not the facility, it's about changing kids' lives, the facility is just a tool." And that's how we feel. It doesn't have to necessarily be CIAA, it doesn't necessarily have to be Mrs. Abernathy who's over the program. It's wherever it is, we're able to help, we're able to assist. So in closing, this video, like, you know, as I stated before, it kind of sums up our program in two minutes or less. So hopefully we do.
Children interacting after school tries to ensure that students have the opportunity to participate in an affordable, safe, inclusive program with fun, hands-on, age-appropriate activities.
We've done robotics both years. Last year, we went to the Ritz Stadium to learn about the science of baseball or the map of baseball. And we do a lot of STEM activities.
Site leaders on hand, they have different variety of activities for the kids to do. They have, you know, health and wellness, they have different types of STEM activities. They have, it depends on the child's interests. You know, they have art, culinary, and different things like that in order to keep the child, children engaged into different variety of activities, which will help them in the long run.
The program helps me because I learned how to be a leader and how to socialize with other people that I haven't known before. And it helps me get my work done because we have a lot of projects in class.
It's, I don't think it's a small convenience, I think it's a big convenience. And I, I really value her being here and just the category of the licensed teacher. She gets all day long, it's amazing. And every time I, I look at the bill, I'm like, it's worth more, way more. But I'm very cool.
See, that day, really fun and like, it's really educational and like, you should actually come join it. We were friends and people tried to come, never thought you were fun.
The secret is out. CIAA is where your students should be. Join us today.
Okay, I'll go first. I know funding is always an issue, that all are always in different ways. And you talked about the Twenty First Century funding, case funding, the Houston's Kids funding. I know at one time, that funding used to diminish over time. Is that still true?
It's still true. And every year that is available or becomes available, we apply.
So you make that up by turning it to tuition-based or?
Yes. So we, so this school year, we were able to, out of the nine camp, eleven, out of the eleven campuses that lost the grant, we were able to turn those campuses into tuition-based. Those campuses are not necessarily providing program at their campus, but we were able to say, okay, we have this nearby campus that already has an established program and we can be able to bus your students to.
I think the question is, I mean, I know it's a good word.
I have a question. Back on the page, we have the Comet sites. At the time, were you all partnering with the ABC line for Comet? You're part of the Comet site?
Yes.
Are, are you still doing that or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm, and I, I'm hesitating because I don't know a lot about Comet, but Ms. Butler.
Just, just, oh, Comet is, you're right, when we started the Comet program, there was kind of three partners, us, the Y, the Five Works. Five Works has kind of taken over the entire operation of Comet. The Y is not, they're not engaged like they were when they had a previous stake in the render, but they're the other, and I can't remember the organization. There's other works, I'm sorry.
Heads up Houston?
Heads up Houston, thank you Tracy. Heads up Houston. So, so the services that the Y provided are being served, are being provided just by the Y. Like anything else has to do with leadership of the.
No, no.
We, we okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm excited Comet. So as a parent, just give to the whole after-school program, they were in elementary, it has definitely changed. There's a lot more academic that's going on in the after-school program instead of just all the playing stuff. I really appreciate the change that they have shown. So thank you for all of you.
Jamaica does a great job, thank you. She never knows how much money she's gonna have in this. Bless her heart, she's, of all the programs, that is probably the most unknown from year to year. She and Carla and others in the federal programs, literally sweat over this. But thank you very much. And it has most in all the heart, to, to this Butler's point, I don't know, all I know about after-school programs that I want is I don't want them to be towards that base. And I know that's what many families utilize it for, because it just helps them out with their day-to-day life. And we, I'm happy we can do that. But one of the focuses we want to have is we want to make sure it's more of an extension of the school day to extend, for those of you that are around in college, but that's kind of what we're trying to do. We'll go to the apartment complexes and that's what we're doing. We still do that. So we also, this year, when it was requested by Five Works and our Comet team, could we start, in order to grow it, could we utilize our children in our campuses? And that's what we're doing right now. That's why we're selling the works. A lot of different entities coming together, and I have some type of moving the extension of the school day along with snacks. So I'm interested.
Jamaica, I, I did have one question I was thinking of. I like the, the structure of the program, the restructuring, because, you know, it's like teachers don't like to sit and get, kids don't like to be in that environment all day, they're more into it. So that would very smart to change that. My question is, the students that are being transported to the other campus, you said that there's a snack time, are they losing any time in that transportation?
Very minimal, very minimal. With the support now, I'll take you for an example. Well, the, the support of our administrators, they ensure that, and transportation, of course, but that we're first, the first stop, drop off. Ms. Bestin, and her kid, this first week was the students were not meeting parents of four, four fifteen, and she went to transportation and she was like, no, these babies, their, their parents are paying for them to be in this program, they're losing the time, they need to get there. They need, so they're the first stop. So they might be between three fifteen, this whistle time, to arriving at the campus, it might be maybe about fifteen minutes, but they still get, you know, the rest of the time to, like, again, we don't rush them with the snack. But we do say that this is our time, you know, up until four o'clock, you have this time to socialize, finish up your snacks, finish up your, finish your conversations before moving to homework.
Thank you very much. I, I have been always excited about the fact that you were involved with that program as well. And I have to give you this because it's amazing to, to see your young days into where we are today. Not, okay. It's amazing. It's, it's amazing because she started fresh out of college coming into A-leeve, and I knew that. And, and so it's, it's amazing to see how this program has grown and developed and all of the research and the information. I was, I was kind of loud. So thanks so very much. Anyone else have any comments? If not, thank you. They're gonna get on you for keeping you out late tonight.
I'm here, though.
Please go on.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Barbara, you can write along here. We're at item number nine. Is there any committee you'd like to give a report to, this Butler wants to be?
Yes, so my committee is the Super Ten Evaluation Committee and the Board, and the Board Evaluation Committee. And we are going to meet next week, probably for our, our quarterly Super Ten Evaluation. We'll be setting a date and time when we publish your, your.
So we'll get, get a little more information, Ms. Moreno, I don't know if you've seen Communication yet, it's a reno. We'll go ahead and look at that mail set. Okay. And the Board will get to hear more information. The expectation is that the Board will get a report of the outcomes of that conversation based upon evaluation. And I know every meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Rowe, for reporting.
I think in the last board meeting, we had reported the committee's recommendations. And I've been working with Craig Icon, so our recommendations were included in board notes. And so then we'll move forward, we'll be contacting my committee to schedule another
We look forward to those reports. Real quick, I want to say thank you to all the board members who was able to go to the TASD, TASD Week Conference and the participation. I don't think I worked so hard at, at one of those conferences, but I, I am very proud and pleased, the participation and the things that we learn, as Mr. Moreno said, it helps us to drive our committees more. So I appreciate that and want you guys to know that the time that you spent is worthwhile and, and we can see that. That's what was going around, around the country right now. That focus is greatly important, that governance piece. So the next item on the agenda to discuss will be the possible adoption of legislative priorities of the ABC's legislative session. It's the change, it's.
I guess just kind of follows Ms. Broder's, uh, coming about the legislative thoughts and suggestions and, I guess, recommendations and hopefully, after trauma, this can be a part of. And, and I've provided to you in board notes the last couple of weeks and, and that part of the, of your place. And I guess what I've, what I've reading him to, I don't, I'm just trying to read the board for, but what I'd like to do is like, just a quick comment on a couple of, couple of issues that I see coming down the, down the pipe as a relation to the first through the structure. There, there's a lot of emphasis here, a lot of talk right now about additional measurements for third to eighth graders, addition to district standard test scores. I've got, I've got an idea, I think, of where this conversation is going to go for the practical matter versus the hope and wish matter. The, the second bullet, we're talking about the Board supporting additional measures is going to be a lot of the teachers. So we will be, we in A-leeve. So, we will be, we in ALEF, um, with some of our crazy staff, which we get really involved in that, for all that we ask, unless we, we run more about what it's areas, whether it's testimony, whether it's, what, whatever the issue may be, um, will we do, will we ask, is it a different issue, is that one of the parts to, to be able to, for, for the, the, the board? I will tell you, the fourth bullet, ADF, I mean, everybody can put that on their, on their legislative agenda, but the reality of the situation is not that much. What, what we do have, I think, is a control, are the inputs that go in, which is what I'm arguing for, there, there's gotta be additional metrics that go into that, that give you a better fundamental understanding of how well your campus is doing, how well your kids and your students are doing, how well your teachers are doing, how well your school. So I, I think there's, there's opportunities there, that we are gonna take advantage of that. That, those are the things I think are, from a purely teaching and marketing perspective, assessment accountability. The other big issue is mental health, and this kind of goes under safety and security and, and the amount of attention that this is going to get to session. The first bill, the Senate's gonna take up, which typically is the budget, the Attorney Governor's told us he's gonna make up safety and security, and the Senate Bill one, which is, it's more of a testament to how important it is by the normal ability you can place it on. But in, in that conversation of part of these schools, it's gonna be a bigger conversation about mental health and, and social issue, ways of identifying that, defining that, you know, declaring it before it becomes something serious. Is that gonna mean additional counselors? I'm not sure what, I mean, we don't really know what it is right now. We, we think that, I think it would be additional money, some of it would be grant, another is maybe a lot of collateral, demonstrate that we're going to do these three things, or we're gonna be, some of it may come from formal issues, we're not gonna be able to make, make the overall decisions. But that's a, that, I think that's gonna, likely so, and that's going to take a lot of attention, it's gonna take a lot of time. So you know, there'll probably be a thousand bills filed by every member from all over the state of Texas. There was ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, we would see there a lot, a lot a day. However, in world politics, you have to show your special, so, I think our, our challenge is gonna be to try to figure out which bills actually have traction, which are the ones that are actually going to be considered, so we can be in there, against, uh, our reaction.
Based upon some of the conversation that happened on TASTA TASTB and, uh, the legislative sessions that I attended, Hartling is gonna be a huge one, and, um, it's one that, um, I, I've been, um, appointed to, to chair the Legislative Committee for the Texas Conference of Black School Board Members, and Hartling is one of the ones that we're going to look at because it has the potential of changing some of policies that's put into place that directly, uh, impact African-American children as far as for, um, um, zero tolerance. So that's been a conversation that's a great concern, that, you know, we want to harness schools for the security, but that conversation, we have to make sure that conversation doesn't become confused, because when you start identifying individuals as having mental health issues, um, you know, based upon past research, who those individuals have been, so we, you know, I just wanted to make it, make it clear, if you guys hear me talk about it, as, you know, they'll learn, and that, that's one of the things, that they're saying that, even though there's great concern about securities in the districts right now, there's great concerns, but that Hartling is something that we need to keep a close watch on, because it could develop into something far different than what it is intended.
There's, I think there's gonna be a fundamental shift across public education, across this country, in identifying social motion for, for, for issues. It's gonna be, we used to be really, or we still are to a certain extent, very hesitant to say, you know what, HD's got, they basically have enough bombs, but it was, it was, it was a dangerous thing to say, because you didn't know what the, what the issue was.
They are, so that when the public starts talking, we, we, they're looking to us to be an expert on this, so we can't let someone else come and tell us, you know, what, what, what it should look like, because at the end of the day, we know how much we value the safety and security of our, of our students and our staff, and everyone's trying to avoid some of the things that are happening in the last couple of months.
So, so tied into the funding, which is the next topic, we're gonna, uh, funding, a, a big, I think, along with safety and security, there's going to be an attempt to correlate the resources the state's provided, with how districts are spending on safety and security. For example, as many, as you know, we get additional dollars for students based on additional to the academy, special ed kids, T kids, you know, disadvantaged children, children. Nowhere in the funding formula, nowhere in the history of the state of Texas, has there any, has there ever been funding for safety and security. So, as an example, maybe we spend, I'm trying to, I think we spent somewhere between seven, eight million dollars a year on our police department, all the things we do, the dogs, everything we do, somewhere in there, they, they get dollars. That comes from the general fund, that, that's not allocated by the state Texas, so local property tax payers, with low board making decisions, and now the other getting their briefs. There's been arguments made by some senators, particularly with ours in the ring, that law enforcement is not a school district's responsibility. When did school districts get into the law enforcement board? Well, that, that trains legislation, that, we're already in it, but there's gonna be this, 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 in terms of adding money to the Scottville Public Schools to fund kids' officers, as an example. I think there's gonna be a debate as to, is that the right way to speak, or, or, should we be using it on other issues? Should the ABC of the world be partnering with the Sheriff's Office, or the Sheriff's Department, kind of like some districts who choose not to have their own police department? My point is, is that eight billion dollars, is eight billion dollars that we could probably go fully pre-K tomorrow, if we didn't have to allocate it for safety and security? And districts are having to make those decisions, they're gonna make those decisions, it's the right decision. But I think those are the conversations that are being had about, how are we gonna pay for that? How are we gonna fund it? Right, you got these, and this is what they're saying, you got these big school districts out there with forty, fifty, sixty, member police departments. Yeah, we, we have to, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain order of, of a large city.
This, I'm just reacting, it's preventing, and it's teen lily, and working with the students, knowing ahead of time, you know, one of the best officers in the back there, that, that knows the kids, knows the, knows the, knows the guts, the feeling of what's going on day by day, and be able to react to this, I feel.
Absolutely, you can't, you can't, uh, call on law enforcement outside of your environment and expect that they're gonna have a great understanding. It's stressful when the conversation right now is getting about police officers having training, they're lacking training.
A given a dollar, not on the life of the child, or staff member, or, you know.
That, that's been the response that, that we, that I've given, okay, then what's the magic number? At what point, versus threshold? Anyway, I, I, as a legislative policyman, I just want y'all to be aware that that, that is already beginning to get to a, and we're gonna be asked, I'll give, I'll assure you, large urban districts with police departments are gonna be asked to, I mean, on utilization prevention and, and, so, just, just, last thing.
Those small districts don't have the funding, so they, they're not gonna react to arming their teachers, you know, in, in the small rural areas, and so, you know, that's about crazy, that's what I made conversations about, but it's.
And, and, and there are some large districts that still contrarian to a little law enforcement, which, there are no valid law way to do it, it just depends on what you, what you're after, but, but as a practical matter, that's gonna be a policy conversation, a careful consideration, especially for our government, especially. Last thing I'll say, I'll, also this, uh, there's, there's, for finance and teaching Hartling, there is a finance plan being circulated around the state right now, it's coming out of the governor. We, there's a couple of us, we've given a copy of it, and we looked at, matter of fact, there's some bill language already distracted, that, that, I'm not so too excited about, but the bottom line that I, that I want to share with you guys, uh, it, there's, the plan's gonna call for additional money, but it's gonna call for additional money with conditions, meaning, and I'll just give you examples, go back to teacher salaries and the, and the whole staffing, uh, issues that are out there. There's a, there is going to be a push, as I mentioned before, to differentiate between pay and there's still, well, where can you get your performance? You can measure performance by test scores, you can measure performance by a lot of different things. Part of the, the new money's gonna be dangled out there, if what happens is what I think's gonna happen, and it's going to put districts like ourselves and many others into a decision that, you know, is to have more approach that, do you wanna chase the money, knowing that you get a play by these sets of rules, or do you not? And I don't know what kind of money we're talking, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna create exactly what it is, but that is going to be a part of a school finance bill, or, excuse me, a school finance plan that comes out of the School Finance Commission, and it's going to go on a lot of attention, and, and the governor, and those who are gonna support this plan are going to, they're going to lobby teachers, because they're gonna say, under this plan, you have the opportunity to turn up to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, and again, that's another layer of hoops that I'll have to jump through, or, or qualify for that, but I, I think from a, the days of us expecting and getting the state to fund additional dollars to the basic lobbying across the board, I think it will lie at the same rate. And that, unless something crazy happens on December sixth of the election, I just don't see that happen. So districts are gonna be pretty strategic in how we look at the, the language they're going on additional money, whether it's on the staffing side, or, or other issues on the child, but there's gonna be additional money for pre-K, it's gonna come with some strength, it's gonna come with quality message, it's gonna come with, uh, uh, performance in third grade, we've been talking about forever, I mean, there, so that, that's just kind of a generic look at it, I think, plan's gonna come out, it's gonna have a bunch of different components. I'm actually gonna leave tonight, be in the meeting in the morning, to, to talk, to let them present this to us, and talk about these issues, uh, and let's, depending, well, that's it.
It's still gonna take a while before we, before we get a file out of the money that they're not going to give us in the, in the revenue, or?
Well, there's a tax cap, the other thing, yeah? That's the other big issue, and I hate to start it, but you should, you know, I think.
I'm, I'm not talking labor, but I, I think that it's important for us to talk about it publicly, to say, so, our community knows that we're aware, we're not, you know, it's, and, and here's the problem, and, and not the follow, but as much as we're hearing all of the negative campaign ads and everything that's going on, as soon as that's over, then this other conversation's gonna come about, you know, fundings for education as well, so we need to be prepared, and we know, you know, we need to be the first ones out there, you know, people look to us to be expert, every one of us in this room, someone is looking to have that information.
So, so after tomorrow, we have a better, much better idea, or after tomorrow, I have a much better idea of what's the property tax cap, so if you're a homeowner, no matter where you live, if you're a homeowner, homeowner, there is gonna be, uh, an attempt cap, property tax, so, the tax, the governor wants two and a half percent, the House wants six percent, the Senate wants four percent, there's a cap, right now it's ten percent. The, uh, the fight's gonna be somewhere between two and a half and, and six percent. That's the first fight. The second fight is, is once you do that, and you, where's the state gonna make up the revenue that's lost to, to the, to the school districts across the state? Where are they gonna get that? That's when you're sort of seeing a conscious, not literally, figuring, because everything's to, we can accept this, we can accept this, we can accept that, that's what you do there.
It's like they want to change something with the compensation piece.
So, I think it's a two percent, two and a half percent, or is that say two percent? You're talking about a seven percent difference, you know, in that, in the tax, what, what kind of offset that, what kind of, that, that, that increase?
I don't know, but, I don't know that we, uh, uh, analysis, it'd be hard, you know, it's about, let me say this, right?
You can't, you can't say it like that, because we, we currently, we currently don't get better, right? Remember, the state offsets it, it's subsequent year, it takes it back. So for the state, what, what, what would it mean? On average, it's probably for us, somewhere in the seven to ten million dollar range, but in growth, normal, normal flow, property growth, and that's funded, our ability to give raises and everything, and so if that goes away, then they gotta come up with something, or else, everybody in the state's gonna be flat, stationary, not growing, well, the, the, uh, the economy's growing, so it grows past, so, like he said, if they don't come up with another measure, like a sales tax increase or something, to help pay for it, you, you can't just take money out of the system and say, oh, it's fixed, you know?
So, so, Barbara, that's, I, 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 I understood the question, but to, to the state, to the state, almost two million dollars, I mean, state. So if you're good with this, with what you have in front of you, either you can choose to formally adopt, or you can, you know.
What, what, what do we want to formally adopt the legislative part?
I was trying to say to the last, it kind of like stopped, it said, allocated for, and then I'm not sure, I'm gonna say go back, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's that second to the last word, and I think it goes into that last word.
Under, under which card is, is it?
The, 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 on the, on the.
The third bill should be combined.
Yeah, the third bill, it should be combined, yeah.
That should be, the third should not be, it's also.
Okay, so it's, it's.
Basically saying the Board, the support, the stretch, and, 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 and for, allowing the, the, the.
That's what I, I just.
And the same is true on the other page, that will, board control for tax organizational elections, support legislation that returns control, those should be, they're underneath that, that will, not on board.
That's why I said not with board control?
Yes.
And, and not hold tell us, aren't they? Those are so.
No, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, this one, the one that's not voted, um, those are all underneath that.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so that, that, that block is, is the first of, okay, okay.
So it's up to y'all to kind of, you know, formally do this or not. If you formally do it, the law can do it, the statute can do it, you do it, if you don't, which you say, you're gonna be supportive, you're gonna say that, it's totally, totally.
Well, no, I'd like to make a question to the Congress, um, raise priorities with the corrective, um, approval of bullets and fix of the, um, priorities for the ABC legislative session.
Ms. Moreno, I have a second.
Oh, I have a second.
Yes, ma'am.
About two.
Committee, yes, ma'am.
This is not a committee, that's a, that's a. Okay, board, uh, is there a vote to, um, adopt the legislative policies? I'll say, or? Okay, opposed? Seven, uh, thank you. You're staying, okay. My, my, I'm leaning, yeah.
Craig, do we have the, they except for legislative breakfast?
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth, everyone can have that on the calendar.
At, at what time? Uh, eight, eight in the morning, okay.
It's going here in the boardroom, wow.
December the fourteenth. And for board members who, uh, new to this, we invite all of our legislative, um, representatives, so, and we have a number of state reps that represent us, should be here that post the election, so.
Yeah, reps, senators, state board of education members, votes, and council votes.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's.
So, and they look forward to coming to talk to you, if they never get a day.
Can we, I'm sorry, can I, I, so, as, as we, as we start to invite, especially, I mean, for PR, as we start to invite, can we get updates on our board notes of who's coming? Because I know, like, when we had our, we had the CTE building, we had some that didn't show up, and some said, oh, I never, I didn't get that email, or I didn't, so, if that can be, can be talked to our, the ones that we know, you know, staying closer to make sure that, do that, so we, on Board notes, just as a people tally of who's coming, so, you know, example, if you were voted to show up, we can just keep calling, and calling, and calling, basically, that's what that works, so, that's, we will, okay, thank you. We'll be there.
And I, I also want to say, I know that Superintendent Chambers mentioned about the mental health, and I shared with him today, I was, I think you're gonna share, um, about a meeting tomorrow, um, uh, it's October, yeah, tomorrow from six to seven, and it's at the, um, ACCA DPA's campus, and it's Make Your Voice Bigger, and it's just community conversations about mental health and trauma, and Harvey, and things like that, and just working with, um, talking to those mental health officials, um, and, and, and. And I also want to say, I know that Superintendent Chambers mentioned about the mental health, and I shared with him today, I was, I think he was gonna share, about a meeting tomorrow, it's October, yeah, tomorrow from six to seven, and it's at the ACCA Today's Campus, and it's Make Your Voice Bigger, and it's just community conversations about mental health and trauma, and Harvey, and things like that, and just working with, talking to those mental health officials, and organizations that could possibly do some partnering, so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you all.
Board, I would like to invite each of you to go into a closed session with me at this time, for section five five one, that's zero seven one, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board attorney, and also, so this time.